I would like to welcome all listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded by both video and audio. During the public comment section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address and will have five minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the board need to use the raised hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the board during the public comment section. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the public comment section. Those attending in person may sign up on the signup sheet located near the entry. Comments are limited to five minutes and should be directed to the board. As these comments are public, the board cautions the visitors to not disclose confidential account information or to disclose account information of an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may also email or call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. My name is Mary Gonzalez, member at large, position one, and currently the board president. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, our general manager, David Haley, member at large, position one, Tom Groneman, second district and board secretary, Bob Mylan, who represents the first district, Jeff Bryant, third district, Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, number three, and currently our board vice president, Angela Lawson, our deputy chief counsel. I would ask you to please put your phone on silent and also be aware that microphones are very sensitive and they can pick up and record comments made anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, please rise and join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic by which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Angela, would you take roll call for attendance, please?
This is Angela, roll call Haley.
President.
Groneman.
Here.
Mylan. Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Mulvaney, Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the regular session agenda of October 5th, are there any comments or corrections?
This is Jeff, move to approve.
Bob, my one second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
This is Angela, roll call Haley.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of September 21, 2022, are there any comments, corrections, or additions? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve those minutes. Work session, September 21.
From move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
This is Angela, roll call Haley.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Mylan. Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of September 21, 2022, are there any comments, corrections, or addition?
This is Jeff, move to approve.
This is Rosa, second.
Roll call, please, been moved and seconded.
This is Angela, roll call Haley.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Turn that meeting over to our general manager.
Thank you, Madam President. Next on the agenda is public comments. So, Rob, is there any customers waiting to speak? No one? Thank you. And Jenny, there's nobody in. Okay. We'll move on to general manager staff reports. First item on the on to that topic is August 2020 financials, Lori.
Good evening. Go over the August 2022 monthly and year-to-date financial results. Looking at our build electric usage from January through August, all of our customer classes are up almost 8%. We are seeing residential up 4%, commercial being up 5%, and then our industrial continues to tick up about 18% over 21 levels. On the water side, overall, water usage is up about 3.2%. We're still seeing residential down slightly by 1%. Commercial is up 6%, while industrial is up 6%. On our revenue side for the month of August, it's up in comparison to last year at this time by 21.6%. Electric was up about seven and a half million, while water was pretty much in line with 21 levels. From a budget to actual perspective, electric was up overall 33%, about 9.2 million, while water was up about 4% or about 210,000. So overall, up about 28.7%, which translates about 9.4 million. From a year-to-date perspective, in comparison to 2021, we were up about 10%. Electric was up about 22 million from 21, and water was up about 1.2 million. From our budget, we are seeing above budget by about 29.4 million, and water is up about 500,000, so overall about 29.9 million above budget, about 13.5%. Just looking down below at some of the individual customer classes there, electric on the electric side being up 16%, so we're about 4.8 million above budget. On the residential side, 10.9 on the commercial side. So we're seeing good growth in our commercial areas through kind of warehouse and the distribution customers. Industrial is up about 3 million. We see our schools up slightly, about 335,000, and then our wholesale sales are up about 8.6 million. On the operating expenses for the month, comparison to 21, so we were up about 41.7%. Electric was up about 7.6 million, while water was up about 300,000. From a budget to actual perspective, we're up 29%. So electric was up about 35% or about 6.1 million. Water was down about 1%, about 25,000. And then our operating expenses from a year-to-date perspective, we're up about 13% from last year, which translates to about 21.7 million above last year. Budget to actual, we're up about 12%, which translates to about 19.7 million. Electric goes up 21.5 million and water was down to 1.8 million. So on our electric side being up 16%, water being down 7%. And on the graph, I noted this last month too, but our fuel and purchase power is about, is 50% of our total expenses for the month. So those are the big drivers in our overall expenses. This looks at just taking depreciation out of the mix to look at our true operating expenses. We're about 15% above 2021 levels. We're 14% above 22 levels on the electric side. We're comparison electric to our actual to budget, our purchase power is up about 8.7 million above budget. Our fuel is 17.1 million above budget. Production, TND and GNA are all below budget. Production is down slightly, about 270,000, while TND is down 4.2 million and general administrative is down 2.3. On the water side, all their expense categories are down. Production being the largest, about close to 900,000, while GNA is down about 600,000. Looking at our change in that position just for the month, we had a positive 10.1 million. Last year at this time, we had about 11 million positive. We budgeted to be at a positive 6.9 with electric actual of 8.7 million, while water was a positive 1.4 million. From a year-to-date perspective, we're at a positive 27.6 million. We budgeted to be at 19.3 million. Water is above their projections. They're about 6.1 million above a budget of 3.9, and electric is 21.4 million above a budget of about 15.4 million. This next slide just looks at our year-to-date electric revenue versus expenses. Revenue continues to be above our expenses, and that's, that's used for our capital program. On the water side, can I see the same picture? The water revenues are above the overall operating and non-operating expenses. This next slide looks at our average daily collections. So we're collecting in August of about 1.8, almost 1.9 million a day. As you can see, the variance is there in what we were collecting the last couple of years, and that is a result of our higher ERC. So last year at this time, you know, in this, in the third quarter, our ERC was about 2.99 cents per KWH, and in this quarter, it's about 4.4, 4.49 cents per KWH. So historical monthly cash comparison, we did have a positive four and a half million for the month of August. That was an improvement in July. We, we dropped about 2.7, so about 4.5 million in August. Looking at our cash position, our cash and securities is about 46.2 million, which translates to about 70 days of cash. Last month at this time, we were about 42 million in cash, so about 66 days of cash. So we, we still anticipate in the third quarter that we still will have an under recovery of our fuel and purchase power, our ERC. One of the reasons is we moved up our outage. Part of our outage, what our projection was, was for let me think, a week to be in the third quarter of the ERC and one to be in the fourth quarter of ERC when we moved it up all into the third quarter. That impacted us a little bit as far as being on the market. So we had a little bit more expense than what we were anticipating, you know, due to that outage. Just a look at our historical days of cash. So we've been, you know, hovering around 70, low 70s, mid 70s, you know, throughout this year. And then the next slide just translates to our days cash on hand is the red line and the blue line is the change in the cash. On the balance sheet, there's some notables here. Our fuel inventory is, is up in comparison to where we were last year. So it's close to about 8 million. On our report today, it shows we had about 52 days of coal on hand. So that has picked back up. We have bond dollars or two issues, the 2016 C, about 700,000, and our 2020 A of 800,000. So we're still waiting on our orders to come in to use that money. So we'll hold on to it until that happens. On the capital spending overall, we spent about almost 22 million to date of the 56 million. So we have 61% of our budget remaining. Some of the larger projects there is the Piper overhead feeders, about 925,000. The Fisher underground feeders out at Rosedale, 3.3 million. Continue to do work, projects around the community for underground work is about 2.4 million. On the water side, their leak valve and system improvement programs, about a million and a half, while their transmission improvements are about 1.4 million. And then also their work in coordination with the UG on their CIP projects, about 327,000. And then our deck coverage, top graph looking at pilot with pilot. So we're about 2.5 times on a combined basis. Electric had about 2.3, 39 or 2.4. Water had about close to 2, 1.97. And then down below is looking at it without pilot. So we're at a 1.83 in the combined, electric being 1.7 and water being 1.5. You have any questions? I would ask for approval.
I'd like to approve the financials.
This is Jeff, move to approve.
Rosa, second.
Roll call, please, been moved and seconded.
This is Angela, roll call Haley.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Next item, I'll ask Jerry to come up just kind of a continuation of our technology journey. I know in the other room, we focused on customer service. This is some of the rest of the utility.
The rest of the utility, so thank you, thank you, Bill. We bifurcated the deck. We really wanted to talk about customer service and initiatives here. Now we're going to talk about the whole company and how we're choreographing it. I have a tagline under the title slide here is we worked on collaboration and teamwork this past year. I mean, in order to get everyone on board, and we felt like our path here is continuous improvement. We're not looking for the major change. We're looking for continuous improvement, incremental improvement, constantly moving forward and upwards. And that combined with delivery assurance, making sure that we can deliver these projects successfully. All right, so next, next slide. So the topics we're talking about today are threefold. Our delivery strategy that we can assure you that, or sure everyone and, and the BPU that we are delivering as promised and it's successful without the defects. That was key for me as I took this job is to ensure that we have assurance on delivery and doing the right things at the right time for the right people. Then we're going to talk about technology roadmap, and I'll ask Robert to, who's the project manager. He heads the project management team to talk about the actual specifics of the roadmap, and he'll talk about some several highlighted projects. But let's go to the next slide on delivery strategy. This is a complicated slide perhaps, but I'll just go over from the very top. This is a formal process, but we execute it in an informal manner. I rarely take a look at the whole enterprise at the same time. What we do on the left here on discovery, we look at our major IT platforms, and there's about seven of them. One through seven, you can read it there. It's the customer systems, it's the meter systems, it's our smart grid, our self-service IVR, financial systems, learning systems, our, our business intelligence program that we've got with Tableau. Whole lot of things we're looking at, and every one of them, customers internally and externally request and new technologies are available. So we take an assessment on that, which gets me to the column B. The assessment on our vision, what do we want it to be? How far we want to go? How much would this cost? How can we get it implemented? Who's going to help out? So we work as a team on that assessment and vision for these individual areas, not as a whole. Not grandiose doing things for the whole company. I'm just focusing in on the individual applications that benefit every one of the business units. We plan and we prioritize the work. We try to choreograph it. We try to have the symphony here with doing multiple projects at the same time, and it's counterintuitive. The more you do, it seems like it's easier because you have one testing group and you've got people that know how it's integrated with one another because it, no longer we standalone applications, they're all integrated. Data flows from the meters to the gatekeepers, to the head-in system, to the meter data management system, hip bone connected to the thigh bone, so on so forth. So all the data we have here from our handheld devices, from our computers to operations from the field, it's all connected and the databases are all able to be seen by one another so we can have all the metrics and dashboards and the governance. So we plan and prioritize that, and then it's up for the project teams, including everyone from the business to help implement it. And we need to establish an actual plan that makes sense. It delivers at the right time. So that's the four-step methodology we use. Again, I've adopted this from elsewhere. It's common in the industry. Our contractors and employees really know it well now. So we follow it where it makes sense and we move on to the next step in the process. That's our process we follow. It's sort of informal in its practice and its implementation. Let's move on to the delivery, next slide. No, I have a couple more here. Okay. We just moved to the next slide, I'll cover it. So here's the strategy I've got. First I want to do is focus on, you can click them all down here rather than having animated. I wanted to work on training first. So this whole last year, unbeknownst to everyone, we've had individual training plans for everyone in the department. We tailor to their needs, we follow up on it, we make sure it's trained, it's online training. We use a number of different platforms we've subscribed to to be able to improve the, the training. On collaboration, we rolled out Microsoft Teams. We keep the training up in our formal training room. We go over testing how that's going to be implemented. So we have a lot of collaboration in the group. Robert runs a daily stand-up call at nine o'clock promptly every, every day, and we cover a number of topics or issues and announcements, any problems, barriers, gaps, technical difficulties. We don't solve them in that meeting, we come afterwards. So collaboration was key to have a cohesive group testing. This was a major limitation that we've undertaken here to have a quality assurance program so that when we go live, it works well. It's already tested and vetted. The QA program is now being led by Nesby, and she's been working on it for a couple of months now, and we're making some major strides here. So we don't rely upon users to do the testing. Users may be an expert in their area, but they don't know the whole application. It's very hard from the test just their area. We need to have a, an automated system that tests these applications when they go live. So that's a major roadmap. Our internal focus is to have that. On reliability, you know, we wanted to make sure our applications are reliable. When they come in in the morning, this, I went on here from the operations group that the applications aren't working, they can't read meters. So we've made a major strides in improving the reliability. Our hardware and integrations, our data center. Brian Laverick described how the network team is doing all the things for resiliency, cybersecurity, hardware integrations, a whole lot of effort on reliability. As you can see, none of these things have a impact on customers, but they make us more effective in IT so we can support our customers. And lastly, and cybersecurity is a, is an internal focus we've had to make sure we are safe from intruders. We get probes all the time. I don't know, it's 10,000, 50,000 probes a day. So we've got a systems in place, we've got a SOC, we've got a NOC, we've got our, our team really working together on improving our cybersecurity. So that's our internal focus we've done. Once we've focused on that and we've got that underway, we'll continue to improve it. Now we'll move on to the next slide on the external processes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What's the SOC and what's the NOC?
Okay. I'm sorry. The Security Operations Center.
Okay.
It's a room with all the applications, single pane of glass, like in a cockpit. All the dashboards are there, all the information. Health of our servers tells us where we've got a cybersecurity event. We can see a lot of places.
I understand the acronym.
Yeah. SOC and NOC. You may not have been here for that presentation I gave, but network, NOC stands for Network Operations Center.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so now let's talk about the external focus before I hand it over to Robert. So we wanted to make our smart grid smarter. We wanted to have our electric feeders and our meters and all of the transport system out in the field for the data all work synchronously with our outage management system. So now, we now have the outage system connected to the meters, connected to the feeders, so they get situational awareness when we have outages. So it's a really smart grid. We just implemented that in the last month and a half. Customer enhancement, we're accelerating an upgrade to our system to deliver all these backlog of enhancements that, that Janet has requested. Replacing the MDM as I described in the previous presentation, that'll have a whole host of functionality which we can present later. We don't need to go over them now. This is just our strategy. If we upgrade the MDM, we can get the portal, we can get customers, commercial, industrial, and residential all connected and have real visibility into what their bills are, our transmission, our meters, our voltages, a whole lot of things it provides. GIS, we're now connecting geospatial with all of our asset management programs. And then the meter data management and then the customer service portal, you'll be able to see outages on a map, you'll be able to see and where the electricity is flowing, where the water leaks are. It's quite, quite, quite interesting. Dashboards, later presentation, we've got about 180 dashboards, executive dashboards, we can present later. This is, we're willing to make in progress with that on schedule and Bill's on us all the time to make sure we deliver. Okay, so we work with him, we meet him once a month, and we do a lot of work outside with the vision that he has for dashboards for running our business well. Our head-in system out in the field, you know, you know a lot about it, but it's some functionality that's needed to collect the meter at all 65,000 electric meters. And how do you get them all into the data center? That's a head-in system we're upgrading. And then the Maximo is a 10-year-long project. We're finally seeing some fruition with that. On a major upgrade, it probably goes live, and Robert will talk about Maximo. He's our Maximo fellow asset management. But it's a long way, a system upgrade, but we're not finished when it goes live because we have a whole host of enhancements that we're doing. Now with that, I'm going to pass this over to Robert, he can stand up now. Okay, thank you, Robert. Thank you.
Give me just a moment, I'm going to transfer my presentation so I can drive from here.
All right, so what does all that mean? Get to my slide here, sorry. So as Jerry spoke, we have been focusing on delivery insurance and improving processes, both the NIT and throughout the utility, improving the use of existing technologies, making sure that we're getting the full value out of the solutions that we've already purchased by integrating those with other systems and making sure we're using all of the modules that were purchased to their fullest extent. And then continuous improvement on the current metrics, enhanced customer service applications for CIS, MDM portal, and getting Maximo completed this year. I just recently came back from the Max, Maximo Utility Working Group down in Birmingham, Alabama to get a good look at what their roadmap is through basically 2026. So we will be finishing up that Maximo upgrade this year, working on enhancements for the next 18 to 24 months. And then we'll be in about a cycle for the next version of Maximo, which is Maximo version eight, or what's going to be commonly referred to as the Maximo Application Suite. So this is a look at what our overall roadmap is for Uh, so this is a look at what our overall roadmap is for the rest of 2022 through 2023 and into 2024. There's a lot of detail on here, basically the way IT is broken down is we have four departments in our budget. Those cover for the most part, uh, the administration and leadership and then the application development side and the network infrastructure and security side. Application development has five teams and network infrastructure and security has three, so we have a total of eight teams in IT. Bill was very adamant from the very start, when I started here four years ago, that we don't just need to plan the projects, we needed to plan the resources. So we have to have a roadmap that looks forward to what the overall timeline and work impact is for each project. Who's actually doing that work in IT and then making sure that we have the capacity planning to make sure that we can get all of that done at the same time. Right, that's one of the most critical things for delivery assurance. Uh, and then working with the other business to make sure that we're also not over taxing any of the external business groups or internal business groups with too many concurrent projects. So this is our roadmap overall, I will go through line item by line item. But all the greatest hits that Jerry's already mentioned with the IVR, the customer assist, uh, information system, GIS system, uh, Maximo. Um, and then we're also doing a lot of improvements that nobody would ever see that are the standard maintenance items like retiring old versions of server software. Making sure that we keep the VM environment upgraded, things like that, right? Things that go into the network infrastructure side of the house that don't get a lot of attention because normally they work, they only get a whole lot of attention when they stop working. Any questions on the roadmap for I'm important? Uh, here's a list of commitments that we made to BPU from IT for 2022. Uh, as you can see, the five that are marked in green have already been delivered on time this year. Um, all of the blue projects will be completed by the end of the year. We have had two projects defer for 2023. That was the meter data management system selection and replacement project. Uh, and that was due to it being an RFP and it is a fairly significant investment, we wanted to make sure we were making the right choice. Uh, and Bill said he'd rather make the right choice slowly than the wrong choice quickly. Um, and then the other one is the field solutions which ties into Maximo and GIS for advanced mobility solutions. We needed to complete the wifi rollout project as a prerequisite to that project, and so that project was not able to be started on top. They will both be completed in 2023, they've already been moved to our budget plan for 2023. Any questions on those? Alright, the AMI to OMS integration that Jerry mentioned a moment ago, uh, really is a huge benefit both to us and our customers. And what that does is it takes the advanced meter infrastructure network of our meters, the wireless meters that are out, out on the houses now. And ties those outages from those meters directly into our outage management system. So that if your individual house drops power or has some kind of service delivery issue, that outage will automatically get posted in the outage management system and you don't need to call to initiate that process any longer. You still can, and when you do, even if the system's already logged that outage and outage management, the system will still recognize your number, will still take the ticket of your call in verifying that you do in fact have an outage. But it takes some of that responsibility off of our customers to tell us when there's a problem and puts it back on our own assets and hardware to let us know that we have either a few outages in a specific area. Or if it's a feeder or transformer issue, it could indicate that for us, right? So it, it is able to log the outage and do some basic troubleshooting to figure out what the most common upstream element is that could have caused the outage that we are seeing. So it, it's a huge benefit of the AMI system to one that.
I think rolls for me.
I was gonna let you finish, Rob.
It's a huge benefit of, of the technology and what it's capable of and it should also make our outages and power restorations fast, our outages shorter and our restorations faster.
Okay, so when, when was the AMI rolled out?
Uh, I may need help on the specific dates, I think it was about 12 or 13 years ago. Uh, I think they started it in 2007, 2008 and it was a two year project of memory serves.
2011.
2011, okay, I'm off slightly on my dates, I've only been here for four and a half, five years.
Okay, and so, so when that, so has, has this integration capability always been possible?
Uh, it was promised with the original implementation of the software. The first times that, the first few times that we tried to turn it on, we either crashed the outage management system with way too many outages. Or there were outages that were happening in the system that weren't coming across. So some of the things that you have to take into account, and I don't want to go too deep into the weeds, but I'll, I'll start to dive into a little bit, just to answer your question. There are a lot of things that can cause a momentary outage that you wouldn't even notice, but your meter would. You don't want those momentary outages coming across the outage management system. Or instead of the average couple hundred outage tickets that we see in a day, you could see 10, 20, 30,000, right? The outage management system is not designed for that loading. And so those things need to be corrected. There were some issues with the communication network over wide area network out to the meters that sometimes cause some spurious alarms. And then there's things that the customers can do that can also cause alarms, like there's a tamper alarm, there is a diversion alarm. There's basically a tilt sensor inside their meters and if they go and open them up, we see that. Um, and those are things you do want to come across because you need to know to go investigate the, for those types of incidents. But so they tried to turn it on a couple of times. Uh, it required some specific configuration from both of our vendors, Honeywell for the honey, for the NetSense AMI system and Millsoft for the outage management system. Uh, and we coordinated with them over the past year to get all of those other issues fixed and finally get this turned on.
Okay, but bef- before you guys tried to turn this on recently, in recent years, where you went through all the troubleshooting and, and you know, worked out the kinks. Had it ever been attempted before?
It had been, they had, there had been attempts to turn it on and to increase the filtering and limit the alarms that were coming through and things like that. But we were not successful in the past.
Okay.
There's a lot that goes into it, I, I, I am skimming over a great many problems.
Oh, I'm, I'm confident that you are and I, and I really do appreciate the detail on this because it just when, when you, when you read what you've done, when, when I internalize what you've done and we have had this smart meter system in place for 13 years, or I don't do the math, but right? Um, it just seems mind boggling to me that this hadn't been rolled out before now. So kudos to Jerry and you guys for being able to accomplish that, but wow.
I will take the kudos, although as the project manager, I do very little actual work, I mostly just talk about other people.
Oh, I hear you.
I'll add to that, so over the course of that time, there were very, very few utilities in this country that had built this integration because the technology hadn't matured to that level. So people were more interested at that time from moving from AMR automated meter reading to automated metering intelligence. So it was all basically early on built around replacing meter readers and continuing your billing process. All of the other operational enhancements didn't come until later, so. Yes, it took a while, it took a while for the whole industry because we, we worked with this six or seven years trying to make this integration work. Products wasn't mature enough to do it, but it wasn't mature enough for many other utilities in this country too. So, yeah, kudos, kudos to the team for finally getting it done.
The key element was we had to bring in the original vendor in order to close the gap, right? It wasn't something that BPU could have done all on its own, even if we had unlimited staff and budget in IT. We still needed the vendor to come and help us fix, fix some of the issues. No problem. So that is, that project is done. Uh, we did hold a project closeout session on 9/14. Um, I do have a couple of line items for lessons learned and process improvements that we want to bring back to the Technology Steering Committee. So that project team is going to continue to work on those process improvements. But other than that, the AMI to OMS project is complete. Next, we're going to focus on our operations projects, we already talked about AMI and upgrading the head in system for our meter system. We also upgraded the meter handheld units, which our troublemen and our meter staff, our light meter and water meter staff use when they got in the field and interface with the meters. Those are handheld phone devices. Uh, and that software needs to be kept in pace with the rest of the software as far as compatibility. Texting for personal and customer communications, which we've already talked about. Improvements to the IVR system for rate 101 and surveying the survey campaign for electric customers through Millsoft. And we've also worked on service applications allowing customers to request and upgrade service. We've got the ones out for the contractors who do the building, basically adding nodes to our network. Uh, and we are very close to being able to release the move ins for residential customers and business customers who want to claim nodes on our network. Uh, onto the outage management system, which we've already talked about briefly. But we also have in, uh, improved the integration, but not only between AMI and OMS, but also to our SCADA system, which is our data acquisition, uh, software that is used out of the power plant to control the power plants, uh, equipment. Getting that integration tied into the OMS also helps the system automatically detect issues and diagnose them properly. Uh, and then moving forward on the texting notification, we already talked about mapping and drafting our GIS system, which is an Esri product. We have been working on load balancing and improving performance specifically for the water engineering folks. Electric is on Esri as well, but they don't have the same symptoms that water does just due to different business processes that they do, the different ways they've designed their maps and the different way their engineers do their edits. So we have been working on improving things for water. Uh, electric's been doing much better this year after a focus last year. Uh, and then next year, we will really focus on the GIS and moving towards the utility network model. Uh, and then last but not least, Maximo, we've enhanced our lockout tagout process in close partnership with water processing and electrical production uh, and improving safety. Uh, we've continued our maximum user group throughout the entire year this year, our internal group here at BPU. And the business has really started to take the lead in driving where they want Maximo to go next. So the Beckys for, and Yolanda's for stores and inventory. Megan and Glenn out of the power plant, Jen out at the water plant. They're really taking the lead on what they need to come from Maximo next, so we'll finish the upgrade this year. And we'll spend about 18 to 24 months doing future enhancements to Maximo next year. Uh, we've also been focusing on the customer service, I think we kind of went through that very quickly at the work session. But as Jerry mentioned, we will be upgrading CIS, which is formerly known as UMS, which is the Kianta product to version 9.2. And as part of the meter data management project, we will be deploying a new customer self-service portal. Uh, we've continued to add kiosks and kiosk locations throughout the county and throughout the metropolitan area, honestly. Uh, and we are also working on bulk payer automation. So right now, all of those kiosk payments all come through on a, a bank file that somebody on Lori's team has to spend a significant amount of time reconciling every single day. Uh, so we're moving to the next step on that to completely automate that process where they will just start doing exception handling of those reconciliations and not have to reconcile the payments individually. Uh, and then we're also focusing on enhancements uh, in automation to improve customer self-service experience, specifically with the IVR and customer self-service. Uh, and then benchmarking, which Jerry already mentioned, uh, in order to compare cost, performance and practices against, uh, our peers in the industry.
How many kiosks do you know that we have specifically in the county and are they found on the website or how, how can people access and know where?
They are found on the website. There's the one here, uh, and then there are several that are in convenience stores like payday loan cash check places in grocery stores. I think the overall metropolitan area, there's over 20 or 30 kiosks, I don't know the number off the top of my head, I probably should.
But they're all listed.
But they're all listed on the website and I believe there's a sign out front as well that has the kiosk locations. Yeah. Thank you, no problem. Uh, so, uh, we already mentioned Max, Maximo. I've got about two months worth of work left on the Maximo upgrade project. Uh, we've got some training documentation that needs to be completed, we are in the course of this project, we were fixing a number of glaring issues that had been with us for a while and one of those was a lack of user training and a lack of training, uh, user documentation. So we're fixing both of those, uh, with the help of a vendor. Uh, we've then got two weeks of user testing and two weeks after that for issue remediation, which I may be able to find some time savings there, but probably not a significant amount. Uh, and then we will go live over one of the weekends in, in December probably. If not late November. So the fixes that we've had to work with in addition to asset and location hierarchies, we've also tied in the GIS system or we're, are working to tie in the GIS system for both of the linear plants. So, uh, Maximo defines plants as being a vertical plant or a linear plant. A vertical plant is exactly what you think it is, it's a power plant, it's a water processing plant. It's someplace where the, in one location, you have a whole bunch of assets stacked on top of each other. The linear plants, uh, from the Maximo world are the operations groups for the utility, right? So water operations and electric operations, where you have a lot of assets, we have them spread out over a very long or large area. Um, so what we're doing is we're tying the GIS system, which already has geospatial data for those assets and a lot of conditional information about those assets into Maximo to allow our users of Maximo to click on a map to find a, a, a asset or location to initiate a work order or service request on that item or return or replacement or whatever else, else it is that they need to do to connect those two systems so that they're sharing data. So that'll be a significant change, um, which we'll start enjoying the, the fruits of those labors next year. Any questions on Maximo? I know it's been a long time since I've given you guys a Maximo update. Yeah, okay, then that's all I have.
Rob, Jerry, I've got some questions. So Jerry, I don't know if Rob's going to be able to answer them or not because they were part of your presentation in the work session. But you just mentioned them, Rob, so I'll go ahead and ask them to you. So on the customer service benchmarks that are going to be developed, is that a proper way to say it? I, I'm wondering, I mean, do we know for those four things that were on the, and I apologize, it's not on this slide, it was in last session, I don't have that PowerPoint available to me. Do, do we not, do we know what our base is?
No, we don't know the base yet. There are two benchmarks, um, categories. We have dashboards, which Bill uses and the executives all here is the executive dashboards. We've got most of those completed, so we know where we're at internally, our own processes. So we have trend lines, we can go back in time, we can go this versus that, numerator versus denominator, that's largely in, in, in done. The external benchmarking through the company called First Quartile Consulting has volumes of data, like you saw on the water, but I think this is even more robust. It's been around for 25 years, this company, and they have loads of data. And they have the expertise on what drives performance. That has yet to be filled out, we plan on having a kickoff meeting next week. Nesby and Jeanetta and our team and their team are all going to get together with a kickoff meeting with Bill about how we address and fill out the survey. I think it'd be a few weeks to fill it out, it's quite voluminous. But it's easy to fill out and it's online. They've gone through this many times with many, many companies, they're going to help us walk through it to make sure we're comparing apples and, to our apples to apples versus other companies and they know all the pitfalls about how to fill this out. So we think it'll be a short time, I don't know, maybe two months or so before we get some results. Typically, there's a data validation meeting, your outliers here, why is that, did you fill it out wrong? You look, seem like you're very low cost here, is that possible? They'll have all the questions through a series of follow-up meetings, pretty low cost survey, high benefit. Now we, when we take it, we've got to digest it and take a look at what we need to do. Again, this is, IT is assisting, this is really Jeanetta and Bill that are driving this for their own improvements or processes. Uh, there are a number of categories, call center, credit collections, billing, payments, customer service overall, IVR, meter reading, they, they include a whole lot of topics. I hope that answers your question.
Kinda.
Okay, um, I missed something, I'm sorry.
No, you did not.
Okay.
No, I'm just directing the questions to the wrong people.
But the effort is now to put in projects, either process projects, people process, training or technology. So we, we have yet to figure that out.
Okay, and I'm looking for the actual data is what I'm looking for, right? So, okay, um, one other question for you guys, I believe I had oh, the text updates. I know that when you first told us about this, I think it was the end of last year that this was coming in 2022, maybe beginning of this year, I'm not even sure. I know you told us about it and this is wonderful advances you guys have made with this. And I see that you guys have rolled out, so in place, the text updates are to the staff which would cover IT outages, safety alerts and HR alerts, right? I mean, that's what was on the last slide, I.
Two items, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, and then there was also in the pilot phase, the management texts, which would cover large outages and I don't know, safety, probably something, I don't know. I couldn't remember what the other one was.
For internal major outages for key accounts.
Right. Oh, right, 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 okay. And what I know, when you originally rolled this out and told us about this, which was great, I know I asked that the board be included in some way as part of, I don't know where we, I know we're not management, I know we're not staff. So are we just going to get like regular customer updates because we're all customers, obviously? I just didn't know. I know we, I know I asked that we be alerted to these things as well.
Well, I have a good answer, I'll defer that over to Bill.
Okay, great, thanks, Jerry.
Before the answer, I guess I'll wait my turn on this. Well, I'm going to go back to the first subject, so let's finish this one.
Okay.
Sorry.
So you will get all the notifications as a regular customer?
I hope so, I mean, they know when to call me when I haven't paid my bill, so that's, that's a positive.
HR and safety alerts. And we've got, you would probably be interested in, we have a server that's down or an application that's down. I think what you're interested in.
I might be.
Okay, well, okay, I mean, I mean. We'll figure it out.
No, no, Jerry, I know this is for Bill, so I just wanted to thank you.
I'm not interested.
I am, because it kind of helps me keep up with the overall performance of the utility, right? And that may not be important on any given day, but on some day it might be, so.
So you will have, by me, Bill, read this, okay? You will get the customer billing, bill due, payment made, payment overdue, eligible for disconnect, disconnect. IT outages, safety alerts and HR updates. These are things, you know, that we give to employees on the HR, like you have open enrollment and these sort of things. Safety alerts, if there's an issue in the building we need to know about, these are internal to the BPU employees. And IT outages, your server network, I'm not sure you're interested in those, but let us know if you'd like to get those.
I think the safety issues is something I'd be really interested in. I don't know about other board members, but that's something I would be really interested in. And I'm not saying just steer those toward us, but I don't know what else we can do here.
In a pilot right now is the key outages and the storm level, large outage. That's in the pilot, I still don't have who gets it or what.
Sure.
I don't, I don't have that yet, so we'll resolve those issues.
And that pilot is being extended because we haven't had a major storm event. So one of the things that the operational crew wanted was.
I knocked wood for you, Jeremy.
Okay, as soon as, as soon as we have one and we can test it in real world instance, then we'll know that we're ready to go live. And then we'll be ready to roll it out to whoever's supposed to get it. But we only have a couple of people on the pilot right now, just in case we get spurious.
The ones I mentioned here are use cases from a use case could be 10 different types depending on the situation. So the ones I think you'll probably be interested in is the one in the pilot, the key account outages and storm level.
Answer my question and go ahead, Jeff.
So, so mine actually is just a dovetail on, on what Rose was saying about the response that you guys will have assembled from the customer survey. So can we expect to have an update with the results of that in the first quarter of 2023? Or by the first quarter sometime?
Yes, we'll have.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Rob, thanks, Jerry.
All right. So I've got like quite a bit to respond on. First of all, I would start out by saying Rose, sometimes, you know, we've had applications and over time, those applications get better and better and better. It's more customer shields it. And people come, come up with more creative ways of using some of these enterprise systems to provide better benefit to their customers, whether they're utilities, banking systems, insurance companies, marketing companies, whatever these large enterprise applications are. A lot of feedback goes into what Rob just went to down to Maximo, the Maximo's users groups. That comes back into their planning phases to help them develop their systems and be able to meet customer expectations. So almost everything that we have here have some type of user conference and some type of customer group that may come back to help them with further development enhancement. And then when they come out with either patch releases or major upgrades, a lot of that information goes into those products and they're released to the general public or to the customers that use those large systems. But so that's one, one thing that has helped us over the years is the systems have matured and gotten to a place to where we can make better use of them today than we could 11, 12 years ago, because they are, they're better designed and they operate and provide more information today than they did back then. The other thing that I'll give kudos to is is we have much better project management oversight in what we're doing today than what we've ever had at this utility. So Rob talked about three years or so, four years he's been here, where he was one, one, he was the first project manager we hired, okay? And before that, IT never had any project managers, okay? So, and now we've gone down the path on not only building a project management office and which Rob is heading up and you've met the other person here today and there is, I think you met Lawrence too. And so they're adding a lot of value to what we do by helping us come in, get better coordinated around all of the things we're trying to build. And we are building and delivering a lot more IT systems at a much better pace. And it's more complete when we do go live with it with less defects. So that's, that's a kudos to Rob, the team, and then bringing Jerry and Jerry gives us a lot of experience that he's bringing in from the utility industry and from the outside world to help us capture ideals that he's seen outside that may not have been generated here. But, you know, he has a wealth of knowledge that that's helped us along the way as well. So, so I would say today, IT is a much stronger position to be able to respond and to get BPU to where it needs to get to than the resources we've had in the past. In terms of benchmarking, one of the things that when I became GM, I had asked Water to go back and start benchmarking because there's been a huge gap between what we've done years ago on the water side and what AWA goes out and releases benchmarking request data every year. So we're now back, back in position to take, participate in those benchmarking efforts on the water side. Some of that has some customer service pieces to it too, so we're, we're able to collect that information. But the first quartile is specifically, what we're doing is specifically driven towards customer service, not water customer service, not power customer service, but specifically customer service. And their investor owned co-ops and municipal utilities that all participate in that. So it gives us a better way of, of comparing our information to, to the industry from a customer service perspective. Now, it's been a while, we've done it in the past, I've known two other reports. Or benchmarking studies that we participated in, we're getting back to that now, because I want to know how we stack up, how we measure up and how, how do we perform compared to the industry? And then because we haven't done first quartile, I think a lot of the board members remember Jerry McKenzie coming in on an annual basis, providing benchmarking information, whether it's financial and part of that financial had operational oversight and that customer service piece is built into it. But we've been doing that for, for every year and I've had Jerry come in. I think maybe all, every year I've been GM, at least at least two or three occasions and provide the board updates on benchmarking from a financial perspective, but it also talks about how we're doing and some of the other operational there. That's been going on, the first quartile is, is a more comprehensive approach. And, and I think that'll give us more useful data to be able to use than what we've had from, from all the others. I do want to pause for a second, ask Jeremy Ash to come up for a second, please. So with a hurricane going through Florida, there was a request for us to send people down. So I'll let Jeremy update you on, on that.
Okay, thank you, Bill. BPU does participate in a number of mutual assistance type agreements where we can provide assistance to other communities, utility companies, cities. And they can provide a, some, one of those associations has ran through Kansas Municipal Utilities, which most of you all know what that is. And Brad Mears is now heading all that up. So usually what happens when there's a large event last year in Louisiana, this year in Florida, APPA sort of stands up the National Mutual Assistance Group, but it's kind of managed in concert with the state where the action is happening. So FMEA in this case would work with APPA and APPA branches out to the different regions of the country. And it's really done based in travel proximity, who's available the quickest to respond. The last couple of years, we've been put on kind of the secondary list and we haven't, we've been ready to travel but not travel. So this year we were contacted and they were activating our zone. So Wednesday of last week, we were contacted, worked, worked close with Darren McNew, Mike Ferguson, Service Center, Bill and Lori. And we decided we could send some resources. So we traveled with two other cities from Kansas. We sent five linemen, three trucks. And they left Thursday morning, they arrived Friday, worked Saturday, Sunday and Monday, they were released Tuesday morning and they made it back to the service center tonight about 10 after 6:00. So they worked for the city of Bartow, which is south of kind of have Orlando and Kissimmee and Lakeland, it's just south of there. So spent about, spent that amount of time working. No incidents luckily, so that's most important. They made it there, performed the restoration work, made it home with no boo-boos, so that's what we're most concerned with usually. You go to somebody else's system, you work on unfamiliar territory with people you don't know and practices you don't know. So the first, first thing we stress with them is protect yourself, use all of your safety equipment and, and all of the safety measures we have in place for safeguarding and ourself on the line. Nobody else can energize something on you, those kinds of things. So it was a good trip. We'll debrief with the guys in the morning and get the trucks through the garage and make sure there's no problems there, back in service here.
So last time, and you have to help me understand the last time we went down there, I'm trying to remember how many years back.
Well, we have traveled 17, 18, 19, 20 and 21, we were both put on that standby list and we didn't get activated and this year we were.
Good, so in 19, we did, and it's up to the board if you want to hear, but we're going to have Jeremy come back and give him the recap of that, or I can, you know, bring some of the linemen in and have them talk about their experience down there. I remember before they went to somewhere around the Orlando.
Orlando, right, all three times.
Yep, and there were a lot of things that they ran into that they hadn't seen before. So it was quite an experience.
Alligators.
Alligator snakes, floodwaters everywhere. It was a lot of, some of them had quite some stories that they told and but the good thing is they get to use their training in adverse conditions that you really don't see here in the Midwest. You may see a tornado come through, it may rip a path through our city, turn down things, but it's far different than what you'd see in a hurricane, so.
And we'll give them a little shout out, I guess, of all, all the four times we have done this, we've been held longer than the other Kansas crews. So a little bit of a badge of honor, but there is a lot of a difference in what our crews do here in the city and on our system and what some of the smaller cities do out in their systems. So I think that has a little bit to do with it too. But overall, we've, we've gotten positive feedback each trip, no different this time. So we will debrief with them tomorrow, catch up with Greg Dumars from KMU and make sure we're squared away on everything we need to close out from there.
Good, any questions from board?
No, but it would be nice if, if any of them would like to come to the subsequent meeting, just so that we can thank them and kind of hear, you know, a little bit of what they experienced.
Sure, yeah. Is like three days of actual work time down there, is that common or that seemed like they?
It depends on the city you go to and the system you go to. The system we went to only had about 15,000 customers. And when we got there, they had a little over 11, almost 12,000 out. You can turn on three or 4,000 customers with just one little minor fix sometimes. So I'm not real sure exactly what all they did, but there's still 2, 300,000 people out in Florida. So what I understand happened is there was so much pre-staging. There's actually more resources there than there are resources to manage those resources. So when some of these cities are getting completed, FMEA is reaching out to the other municipals and the other co-ops. And they're saying, you can send them home, we don't need them. We, we did try that before we drove all the way back. It's usually we plan on being gone about two weeks, that's kind of.
I thought the last time it was a couple of weeks, it just seemed like that's correct. Two or three days with the damage and devastation that they had down there, that, that didn't seem like it was a.
Yeah, it's, they drove right past a bunch of people out to get home, so. And, you know, our contractors left, they actually got back Sunday, Capital Electric got back Sunday and they had 100 guys drive home, so.
Another thing to remember, Tom, too, is like Florida Power and Light, some of the other investor owns there, they have a mutual aid program through the Edison Institute. So people like every GM or in some of those are going to be dispatching crews through their Edison Institute mutual aid programs. And those that are larger cities that may, you know, have more damage sometimes.
There's some private resource aggregators too that will, they'll come up with a mutual assistance agreement and they'll reach out to the different contractors and people like that. And they'll, they'll, you know, for instance, they would call, say a Cap Electric that like works for us. Hey, we're aggregating resources for this storm, they guarantee their money and they get them down there and and get them back. But that's essentially what happened this time, so much of that was activated ahead of the storm. That it was just too flooded, when people got down there, cutting them loose.
Thank you, Jeremy. Final thing I've, I've got is, you know, we are still dealing with supply chain issues. But, you know, we were able to work our way through some of that. And as people that may be tuned in from outside of this room can see that we, you know, through our Zoom application, we're now broadcasting this board meeting, both in audio and in video. So again, kudos to Jody's group and to IT for helping make this happen for us. So that's all I have.
Board comments, David?
Thank you, I'd like to thank you for the extremely informative update, both Jerry and Bob. Thank you very much for the helping to educate us on the improvements that are coming and where we are. And also of course to Lori, I don't see her, but also, oh, for the financial, I'm sorry. Thanks for the, for our financial update as well. Also, I'm glad to hear that we were of some help to our fellow members in the other state and that we did have a significant exercise in Florida where we could contribute. I appreciate the work session that we had earlier today and we finalized what the cold weather rule will mean and I'll look forward to what the board action might be and what we'll implement as we approach colder weather that's coming up. And other than that, I am, I think that's it, there was something else, but I just suddenly forgot what it was. There was some, oh, the other issue that I appreciate that we had in the work session regarding the lobby and the information that was provided for how feasible it would be to maintain and where it may not make any sense to return to happen lobby. Thank you.
I'd just like to also echo David's comments and thank everybody for the reports and updates that they gave us. It's always enlightening to, to get those.
It's always enlightening to, to get those, those reports. And I might also say that on Monday of last week, I was on, in on the Public Works and Safety UG Standing Committee, and we met. And one of the things that they had, they brought up was the CDL Commercial Driver's License. And I know that Jeremy had mentioned that, that presentation he made. They, their Public Works Department made a presentation and that they are doing their training, their CDL training in-house, and that it, instead of, you know, farming it out, and it costing five thousand dollars or so a person to, to get the CDL training, they're able to do it for about a hundred and fifty dollars a person. And I don't know how, I'm just gonna throw that out and, and see, I don't know how we're doing it. But maybe if we, you know, could check with Jeff Fisher or whoever at Public Works and, and see how there, if we can piggyback or do something with the, with that.
Jeff reached out to us when they started that initiative. We had already enrolled some folks in the KMU to become trainers. So we're essentially running it the same way here at BPU as they are there.
Okay, so we have our own trainers.
We have two trainers that we sent down there, one at water operations and one at electric operations. They got all the certifications to teach, we have all the tracking mechanisms, and the KMU is the submitter, so. Yeah, we did the same thing, essentially.
That's good enough. I just, that came up in the, in the, the presentation there in the committee meeting, so I just thought I'd check and see how we were doing it, and we could.
Pretty much the same.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, couple items. I'd like to appreciate the information on the technology. I appreciate you giving very concise, this hasn't, thanks again for customer service, appreciate that. And last but not least, those linemen, for what can I thank you enough for, you guys take the extra effort to go and help other people, other cities. That's the compliment that our staff is able to go and help other cities in time of need. You never know, someday we might need their help. Thank you very much.
Jeff?
Yeah, I just have, sorry, I have a couple things. So Jeremy, please pass along my appreciation to the line crews that assisted. And I look forward to hearing their reports and the interesting things that they saw while they were there. Andrew, I enjoyed the purchase power update, although I was cringing. It did, the rising gas prices are a reminder of the value of maintaining a portfolio of multiple fuel sources like the BPU does. So when people ask me questions like, why do we have, you know, why, why isn't everything wind, or why isn't everything this? It's the changing dynamics that you never can predict, that the best thing you can do is have a good portfolio, and we do, we do a good job there, thank you. And I also want to recognize the staff for their continued diligence and getting the most out of the dollars available. So when Lori was given the presentation, it made me think, because, you know, we, we live in a world now of rapidly accelerating costs, we all see it. I noticed that we've been holding our year-over-year cost increases to in the fifteen percent range. So, you know, many of the industries, because I, I deal a lot with the Department of Labor, and a lot of the industries are seeing twenty-five to thirty-five percent cost increases. So what we're doing is cost avoidance, which is just as important as, you know, as getting, you know, going out and, and trying to get a reduction from a vendor, so it makes a huge impact on the amount of maintenance that we can accomplish in a year by keeping our costs down. So I want to pass along my thanks to all the staff who, you know, it takes, it takes the entire staff to be able to do this, so thank you all very much.
I would just echo what everyone else has said, thanks to everybody that did all the presentations. I know when we listen to you, Andrew, it's meaning kind of step one of the budget process, so getting that ready is not really something I look forward to, but know that we're going to do. So I just appreciate all the knowledge that everybody shared tonight. Thank you.
I certainly echo the sentiments everyone else made as well. And obviously, Jeremy, you know, thanks to the team for heading down to Florida and doing the thing, doing their thing. You know, that, that is something, obviously, all of us, not just a BPU, but all of us in Wyandotte County can be very proud of, so. Thank you for that. And I attended a meeting yesterday with Commissioner Bynum at her request with Dr. Evelyn Hill from Avenue of Life. Apparently, the mayor has commissioned a pilot task force, which Commissioner Bynum asked me to be a part of, actually, I believe Commissioner Bynum asked Chair Gonzalez, if I could be a part of the task force, and Chair Gonzalez said that would be super great with her. So I am, don't know where that's going, but there is gonna be some information that I have committed to getting for the task force, and that is the amount of pilot that we've collected by customer class, customer group. So I will follow up with email and, and send that over, but that's information that they've requested, so that's all I have.
Do we adjourn before the executive session? You wanna read the?
Yes, do you, do you want a two-minute break?
Five at least, please.
Why don't we make it eight by the time you're done reading?
The preparation for adoption is as follows. I move that after making an eight-minute break, the board going to executive sessions for twenty minutes. The first conference, confidential matters related to the general manager, personnel matter of not elected personnel is justified under the exception of the main set, and that the general manager will be concerned with loss and be present to participate in discussion. All others to be dismissed from the room, electronic, telephonic. And that we reconvene in an open session, returning to both electronic, telephonic broadcasting at eight PM in the boardroom, to either take action in an open session or to adjourn.
This is Jeff, so moved.
Eight PM?
No.
Did you say twenty, twenty minutes?
Twenty minutes after an eight-minute break.
Okay.
Well, that would only be.
That's not gonna be eight PM, I don't know.
I thought you said thirty, sorry. So, did you say twenty? I, I moved to make, I moved to approve and end at seven fifty. I, I thought I heard thirty.
Roll call, please.
Call Haley?
Hi.
Brenneman?
Hi.
Mylan? Bryant?
Hi.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Mulvaney, Henry?
Hi.
That motion carries.
Ready? We're back in open session. I'd like to ask for a motion for adjournment.
This is Jeff, this is Jeff, move to adjourn.
Rose, I second.
Roll call, please.
This is Angela, roll call Haley. Brenneman?
Hi.
Mylan? Bryant?
Hi.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Mulvaney, Henry?
Hi.
That motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.